Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Y'all know, most of you know me locally, know I don't like a script, but I am going to stick completely to it tonight. Welcome to this evening's listening session for the first congressional district. My name is Mike Long and it's my honor to represent the first congressional district on the State Board of Education. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to hear testimony from interested citizens and educators within the congressional district regarding the performance and problems of public education within the district. Also, I'm here to listen, we are here to listen to your comments about the Common Core, Georgia Performance Standards in Mathematics and English Language Arts as part of the State's Board's formal evaluation of these standards. If you would like to speak tonight, which I've already mentioned, please be sure to put your name on the signup sheet that is located on the table just outside with my wife. But before we get started, I would like to give a couple of thank yous out and a couple of business matters. The restrooms are out to your left, out this way. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Glenn Dibbert, I don't think he's here tonight, he had another engagement, the president of this facility, Sherri Glenn, the Coordinator of Economic Development, and Chad Swanson in the back of the room, the Director of Distance Learning here, for their assistance in helping make this meeting come together tonight. I've asked them to reserve this room for one hour to hear your comments, and they have been very gracious and very welcoming and get it all set up for us. Second, I want everyone to understand that we will be videotaping and recording tonight's remarks. This ensures that everyone's comments are heard accurately and recorded. We also have a floor mic, if someone is uncomfortable coming up here, we'd be glad to let you, both mics are set to the recording system, so you will have access to that as well. And I also, for some of us more distancedly challenged people, I brought an extra pair of readers if you get up here and you can't read. So, I thought that was a pretty good touch. Third, I want to introduce and thank my friend, Dr. Gary McGiboney, Deputy Superintendent for External Affairs at the Georgia DOE. He is here tonight to assist with this hearing, and I'm going to go on to how we're going to conduct this hearing now. First of all, I expect everyone to conduct themselves in a polite and respectful manner, no clapping, booing, or other expressions of approval or disapproval of a speaker or speaker's remarks during the hearing. Second, as I indicated, the purpose of this hearing is for us to listen to your concerns. Accordingly, tonight I will be listening to you, I will not be responding to any questions or nor will Gary, Dr. McGiboney, at this time, that are raised during the hearing. We're here to listen to you. Third, in order to conclude the hearing in a timely manner and hear from everyone who wants to speak, please be sure you have put your name on the signing sheet, and we will read it in order. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I will call the names of the speakers in order listed on the signing sheet, and if you're, if you're not here when your name is called for some reason, or do not respond when your name is called, I will go on to the next speaker on the list. Since you cannot give your time to someone else, if you want to echo what another speaker said, you may simply say, "I agree with what Mr. Smith said," and your remarks will be noted accordingly. Again, each speaker has three minutes to speak, and here's how the time clock, time clock is going to work. Dr. McGiboney will start the three minutes on the stopwatch. You will have time to introduce yourself briefly, just my name is and I'm from, and then we'll start the time. Next, you'll see a yellow card come up with 30 seconds remaining, and then the red stop card indicates your three minutes are up. Once the three minutes are up, we'll ask the next speaker to come forward. I want to thank each of you for coming tonight and sharing your concerns about public education with me. I am a listener and I will listen, and I will try to act. I look forward to listening to what you have to say. And leave the cheers.
Good evening, and again, my name is Lane Ricker, and I'm from Bacon County, the superintendent in my 32nd year of education at the elementary, middle, high district, and higher education level. And I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak and for listening to our concerns. The first thing I would like to address is the Common Core, Georgia Performance Standards curriculum. And although, as a state and as local districts, we should continue to monitor this curriculum on a continuous basis to make sure that we are meeting the current needs of our students. These adopted standards have several advantages. They are much more specific, much more specific, in the, with the inclusion of substandards over the Georgia Performance Standards and the QCC objectives. They include sample tasks that require critical thinking and depth of knowledge that we have not seen before in a state curriculum. Some areas, especially in LA, have added deriving word meaning, which is so important to prepare kids for higher education and for careers. There are charted progressions of skills. It has been vertically aligned, the standards have, to ensure that there are no gaps in children's learning. Each of the standards include vocabulary that teachers would, could preload and teach in order to, for those students to understand those standards. And there are also strategies and integration tasks for the teachers. All in all, this curriculum and these standards go much deeper than any curriculum that we have had in my 32 years in the state. However, the integrated nature of the high school math curriculum has proven to be a challenge to most of our students, especially on a block schedule. There is a large amount of information to cover over multiple subjects within each course, to grasp in a short amount of time. The highest 30% of our students can master these concepts, whereas our special needs students and those that are just average have difficulty surviving. The biggest concern at this point, and I speak for my district, remains the assessment process. We are grateful to the State Board for waiving the assessment requirements for promotion and retention, as well as the grade component for high school tests this year. We thank you. We also support Secretary Duncan's suggestion to remove the new assessment scores from teacher evaluation for this year. There are, however, some additional remnants of the effects of assessment that need to be considered. What will become of our student learning objectives that we've spent time and money drafting and administering already this year? Will they be considered as far as student growth and teacher evaluations? Will student growth and achievement gap remain in the leader evaluation process? And will student achievement growth and achievement gap remain in our CCRPI, our College and Career Readiness Performance Index, for this year? It will be very difficult to hold schools and systems accountable for assessments that have lost their meaning at the school level. I thank you.
Thank you. Mark Durham from Camden County. Thank you. My name is Mark Durham, and I'm the Director for Student Services for Camden County Schools. I want to thank Mr. Long and Dr. McGiboney for being here tonight to hear us. I am working at the central office now, but I have just moved up to the central office. I've been working directly with schools for a long time now. This is my 30th year in public education, and for the past seven years, I've been the principal at Camden Middle School in Kingsland, Georgia. And I worked directly with a lot of hardworking people in curriculum and instruction, and I can tell you that we have, and what I want our folks to understand tonight is, we have a lot of resources, money, time, sweat, and blood put into making sure that these standards have been implemented with fidelity in our system. A lot of hardworking folks and smart people have been working on making sure that these standards are implemented with fidelity, and I think we've done a pretty good job with it. And I think that turning and changing the direction of the ship at this point, as far as our standards go, would cause a lot of harm to our students, to the progress that we're making following this path. I think we need to stay the course. I think I speak for, I'm not here as a spokesman for Camden County Schools, but I think you would find that pretty much the consensus is, we need to stay the course. And if we do, we will lead the South in, in education for the next few years, for the next, in the future. If they, if the rest of the South decides they want to walk away from Common Core for political reasons or whatever, let them go. We will stand as the shining star in the South if we just stay this course. I believe that, because the people around me that know a lot, that are a lot better teachers than I ever was, we have very smart people at State Department of Education. Now, there's a lot of frustration out there right now with the assessment program and the teacher evaluation, everything rolling out so fast. It is fast, change is messy, it just is. And I understand the frustration, but there are some various, we're lucky in our State Department of Education, we have some very smart people up there. And I've come to understand that a little bit better in working at the central office and having more direct contact with some of those people. I really respect what they're doing, but to me, tonight was just about having, you understand, when you go back, because I know there's a lot of legislative pressure to do something about the Common Core. As an educator, a father, a grandparent now, I'm very proud of this state, and I think if we stay the course with the Common Core, our children will be ready for what they're going to need to know and be able to do in the 21st century economy that they face when they graduate from high school. Thank you.
My name is Joanne Frye. I'm the Instructional Specialist for Mathematics at Camden County High School. And in reference to the Common Core, Georgia Performance Standards for Mathematics in high school, I feel like the standards are good standards. I think that our teachers are learning how to teach them. The standards are preparing our students to progress through the curriculum as far as they want to. If they want to get to calculus in high school, they can. We have students that, that go through calculus too at our high school. There's a way to get there. Our struggling students are having some difficulty, but we're working with them and we're moving them along. I think that harm would come from pulling these standards out from under us at this point. We've, as Mr. Durham said, invested a lot of time and effort in preparing our students, preparing our teachers to teach them. It's very difficult to have different grade levels following different course sequences. Right now, we have, the seniors in our school are still doing GPS, and our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders are doing CCGPS, and I worry about, you know, just, it's difficult to manage when you've got students progressing through different sequences of courses. I think if you just leave us alone and let us teach these standards, that, that we'll be able to do fine. And I'm speaking specifically about math, I'm not an expert at all on the ELI standards. Thank you.
Greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here, and thank you very much for, gentlemen, your time for being here and giving us the opportunity. Superintendent Ware County Schools, this is my 10th year as superintendent, first year in Ware County. In an effort to assist teachers in expediting the grading process, Ware County Schools hired substitutes this year to cover classes so teachers could grade the SOLOs at a cost of nearly $5,000, local money. This was an unforeseen expenditure funded by our professional development funds. It's expected that, that number will be even greater for the number of subs that we'll need during classes during the post-test administration. We decided to do this locally because our teachers are beaten, they feel beaten up, if you will, they feel the morale is low, there's just a lot of, a lot of change going on, obviously. We're trying to lift them up, we're trying to encourage them to continue and stay the course. In addition to funding subs, Ware County Schools allotted $5,000 in the FY15 budget to help cover the costs associated with printing the slows. This expenditure has been incurred at the local level as well. During the 1415 school year, select teachers will begin writing additional slows to meet the requirement of at least two growth measures per teacher for the 2015-16 school year. The cost of creating these slows is yet to be determined, but is expected to mirror or exceed costs incurred during the first phase of the slows creation. Another point of concern is the, I like to raise, is the pending deadline of the July 2015 deadline to declare our intent to pursue charter system, i.e. squared, or status quo. That's of grave concern to all of us in this room. I know all school superintendents want to remind you of that. State and federally mandated initiatives require adequate funding to implement, obviously, yet there have been increased austerity reductions. Please, if you could keep ever in mind freezing the austerity reductions, that we'd be forever grateful of that. Teaks and leaks implementations, along with the slows, does little to affect student learning. Teaks and leaks is a direct target towards teacher accountability and teacher assessment at the expense of instructional time. Instructional time, creating the slows assessments takes approximately 12 to 15 instructional days per year. Grading the pre-test takes an additional three to four instructional days per year, while grading the post-test will also take an additional three to four instructional days. Thank you, sir. The state online test requirement of 30% 2015, 80%, 17, and 18, and 100%, that's quite a hurdle. That's going to be a challenge for a lot of the systems. As far as the curriculum, I totally agree, it's a great curriculum, Common Core curriculum. Math may need to be tweaked, I totally agree with that. The Race to the Top initiative, there's a lot of systems, the majority of systems, 150 systems, did not participate down the front end, now will be dragged into it on the back end. That whole concept needs to be reconsidered. Thank you, sir.
My name's Amy Denty, and I'm the Curriculum Director in Wayne County. I've been in education as a professional for 24 years, even though I'm working with curriculum and instruction now, I really consider myself a teacher at heart, and also consider myself a lifelong learner. And I want to talk to you tonight with my teacher and learner hat on, not my administrator hat. In, a couple of years ago, our teachers were presented with the Common Core, Georgia Performance Standards, and with no phase-in plan, they implemented the standards in one fell swoop and truly built the plane while flying it, and they did a masterful job of it. I've never seen teachers put so much time, energy into collaboration, and really becoming learners again to truly learn about the standards. It was refreshing to see that, but it was a lot of hard work, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears. Considering a change after two years of that kind of work is disrespectful to our classroom teachers who march in every day and who do the very best job possible to meet the needs of a very diverse population of learners. Lots of financial resources have been spent to provide teachers with instructional resources and with the types of tools that our students need to master these very valuable and rigorous and worthy standards. It's disrespectful to our taxpayers to consider changing curricula after only two years when those kinds of funds have been put into the support of those things. Like everybody else has said, mathematics is a concern, and for me, high school mathematics is the biggest concern. The large amount of content does not allow for time to get to the true depth of knowledge that needs to happen for our learners. And so I do believe that we need to take a step back and take a good, hard look at our high school mathematics sequence, and consider whether one size truly fits all, or if we need to take a look at providing a way that for some kids, we can slow things down a little bit, break things into smaller chunks, giving them more time to truly master those standards and to apply them to true life skills. We don't necessarily have to slow that down for those students who are ready, and who are ready to master those standards in a short time and truly fly with it. I'll just mirror the comments from the superintendent from Ware about the SOLO process. I'm not sure that the state has properly provided the kind of support and resources that we need in small districts to do that with the quality that our students deserve. All of our districts have had to do that with the same amount of personnel, and our students deserve more quality than we've probably been able to prepare at this time. Thanks so much.
I am not a teacher, I've enjoyed, I appreciate this time to speak to you. I have to go on what I have seen happening in the schools since I was a child. When I graduated from school, I knew English, I knew math, I knew science. I live in Brunswick, am I echoing, or, okay. I am concerned about the product that we are turning out of our schools. I have seen for the last 35 years, the dumbing down of our children. Now, maybe these are harsh words, but I don't understand how Washington DC spends $19,000 a year per student, Glen County spends $10,000 a year per student. What are we getting for our money? And basically, I want to see kids who come out of school and not tell me, "Well, I don't have to pay taxes if my house becomes a church." I don't have to, I want them to be able to work hard, not come out of school and say, "You know what, I want it all now. Why should I have to work like you did? Why do I have to save like you did?" I want you all to instill in these children a good work ethic. That is what a good student does, he inspires the children. I don't care anything about statistics, I don't care anything about your vertical lines. I want to see happy children who have learned a lot and has a teacher to inspire them to say, "I can be better than, than the person behind me." Thank you.
I'm a parent, and I'm also a Georgia classroom teacher. I teach in the district in Camden County. As a parent, my name's Jeremy Spencer. As a parent, my children have gone through QCCs, GPS, now Common Core Performance Standards. And what I'm, what I'm seeing is a lot of inconsistency of concepts that are moving from one grade level to the next. Now, of course, my children went through that transition when they started school to what we have now. And a lot of that is because of political dissidence that's been created in the state and in the country. I can tell you this, as a, as a classroom teacher, your, your standards, whatever they are, they're going to have to go through some type of precision review and process. They're going to have to be rewritten, in some cases, they're going to have to be changed to meet the needs of the students so that we get the standards right. We did, I was on framework task writing committees up at the DOE, we did some stuff like that. We, we talked about standards that we wanted to see slightly changed to benefit our students. I honestly see progressions in the standards, because I've seen GPS standards, I've seen Common Core Performance Standards as a parent, as my children have come through, and I honestly can tell you that there are progression issues, particularly at the high school level. There are some in the elementary level that I do think could be fixed, but the problem is, these standards are now copyrighted, and teachers don't have the table that they used to have when we were peer reviewing the Georgia Performance Standards. So, I encourage you guys to give us the ability to peer review these, and if rewrite these if possible. But really, the reality is that the testing is driving instruction. Unfortunately, we're repeating a Groundhog Day event with what we see here with Common Core and Race to the Top. The other anchor pieces that deal with Common Core, such as Race to the Top waiver, such as the testing piece and the teacher evaluation piece, we're not giving the time necessary needed to implement anything that needs peer review, and that should get the peer review by the teachers, and if needed to be rewritten, it needs to be rewritten. Thank you.
I am Sharina Eriksen from Glen County, and although I have many issues with the overall Race to the Top grant and the federal role in education, I want to use my time to point out some specific problems with the standards themselves, but before I do that, two general comments. One was from an article today that came out in the news, it said, "The Carnegie Corporation Said That Common Core Will Double the High School Dropout Rate." The second thing I want to point out is public opinion polling on the Common Core, the more people know about it. Gallup did a poll last week, I believe, noting that 60% of the public was now against Common Core. Now, as far as the standards themselves, I just, I'm just going to go through a tip-of-the-iceberg kind of review, and you can stop me at any time, because I have a little bit more than three minutes. For example, Grade 1 standard, add and subtract within 20, demonstrating fluency for addition and subtraction within 10. Nothing wrong with that, that's a good standard. But what follows in that standard is not acceptable. It says, "Use strategies such as counting on, making 10, decomposing a number leading to a 10, using the relationship between addition and subtraction, and creating equivalent but easier or non-sums." All right, this standard does not require only knowing addition and subtraction for a first grader within 20, as a content standard should. It insists on knowing four specific ways to add and subtract. In other words, it dictates pedagogy in the classroom and curriculum. Further, some content needs to be taught ahead of the grade in which the relevant standard appears in the Common Core. One example is the case of the standard algorithms for arithmetic. The standard algorithm for addition and subtraction does not appear in the standards until grade four. Grade five for multiplication and grade six for division. This delays student learning and will put our students even further behind other nations. The concept of pi, including area and circumference of circles, is gone in elementary grades. Students were able to do this in the fifth grade in the GPS. These concepts are found in the international standards at grade five. Our students will not be able to complete, compete on international tests if they don't learn these skills until grade seven, as it now is. Division of a fraction by a fraction, this is also gone in elementary grades. Instead, students receive a simple grounding in fraction operations, such as division of a fraction by a whole number and a whole number by a fraction. The research is clear that other countries divide fractions by fractions in the elementary grades, and we're losing that. The fundamental theorem of arithmetic, prime factorization, is gone completely. Let me tell you, Bill McCallum, who was one of the three Common Core mathematics authors, notes that the, quote, "Greatest common factors and least common multiples are treated with a very light touch in the standards, they are not a major topic, and limited to numbers less than or equal to 100." They are not a major topic and limited to numbers less than or equal to 100." Is that good? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long, Mr. McGibney. Before you this evening, as a resident of the first district, but I am employed as the Assistant Superintendent of the Effingham County School District. We concur with much of what you heard from other school districts in regard of some of the ongoing concerns as we move to implement some of the current initiatives across the state. But tonight, I'm here to address you as the President of the Georgia Association of Educational Leaders and as a past president of the Georgia Association of Curriculum Instructional Supervisors. The Georgia Association of Educational Leaders believes that the infusion of the Common Core state standards into our Georgia Performance Standards to produce the CCGPS is moving our schools in a more positive direction in terms of ensuring that all students are striving towards high, rigorous academic goals. Overall, our members, including superintendents, curriculum, and instructional supervisors, elementary, middle, and secondary principals, support staff, and others, believe that the CCGPS and their ability to lead to deeper levels of learning for Georgia students are a good thing. Gail believes that the CCGPS will increase students' skill mastery across subjects and provide for a deeper conceptual understanding of math and language arts. As you know, the CCGPS, excuse me, the Common Core state standards were developed by experts identified by the National Governance Association, the Council of State School, Chief School Superintendent Officers, and the work of states that had already developed very rigorous college and career readiness standards. Georgia actually was one of the states that was selected to participate in the development of the Common Core state standards. And one can clearly see throughout the standards, Georgia's influence on their development. After the initial draft, the standards were posted for public comment in Georgia. And we encouraged, as Gail, our affiliates, our teachers, and leaders to provide input and feedback, and many of us did do that. The CCGPS clearly state what students should know and be able to do at the end of every grade, kindergarten through high school, in the areas of reading, writing, speaking, and listening, vocabulary, and mathematics. The standards establish what students need to know and be able to do. They do not mandate curriculum or how teachers should teach. District and building-level leaders and teachers decide how to teach. And our standards guide the development of our resources in order to help make our students prosper and be ready for the world of work that lies ahead. Gail strongly supports the Common Core Performance Standards as we know them in Georgia, as the Common Core Georgia Performance Standards. Thank you very much for your attention.
Good evening. My name is William Ligon. I'm the state senator from the third district. And I was the sponsor of the legislation to withdraw Georgia from the Common Core and other Race to the Top mandates. One of the concerns that I hear from a lot of people and a concern that I have is that we seem to be forgetting some of the founding principles for what maintains a government of free people and that we're becoming unwitting participants in the unraveling of the fabric of self-government when we don't support our laws and policies to uphold constitutional principles. Let me explain this. When this country was first founded, our founders, in essence, put their, all their eggs in one basket. They didn't even consider a Bill of Rights until the Constitution was going through the ratification process. Because, as James Madison explained in Federalist Paper Number 51, "In the compound republic of America, the power is divided between two distinct governments, the state and federal government, and then there are further divisions within that government." And we call that principle federalism. And at the heart of federalism is the organizing principle of what we call the subsidiary. And that is that matters are best handled at the least centralized level of competent authority. And they, our founders felt that this multiplicity of interest and pushing those decisions down to that level were best to ensure our liberty and to provide the best policies and direction for this nation. And my concern, and the concern of many others, is this, is that we've had a good educational system in this nation and it led us to become the greatest economic engine that the world has ever known. But the federal government is now, is in the process of making education its playground. And it's doing that through the spending clause where we entice states and others to advance the federal education policies by taking their money. And no financial analysis is done at the state level to determine how much it would cost taxpayers in the long run. Certainly, that did not happen with Common Core. And it seems that there's no consideration about how this principle of government is going to play out in the long term. I mean, what are we going to lose? One of the big concerns with Common Core is that we lose our flexibility and our ability to make adjustments. And you've heard some of that tonight. And as a result, we, many see that we're losing accountability to parents and taxpayers at our local level because our focus has become on accountability at the state and at the federal level. And because of this, we're losing interest in, in people's voices because they feel like their voice really no longer, no longer counts. So what I'm asking you to do is to, is going forward, let's look at our policies and let's see, and let's consider, what are we doing to our system of governance? And let's make sure that we preserve our flexibility and our accountability to the local, at the local level. Keep those decisions where, where they're made by, by the people who have the greatest concern over their outcomes. So I appreciate your time.
Okay. My closing statement is, I do want to thank you. This is my first time through this rodeo and I'm committed to try to do the best I can to represent this district. I want to thank you all for attending this listening session for our first congressional district. And I want to remind you that all these statements tonight and your names will be recorded and we will accurately capture your comments and go over them. And I want everyone to have a good evening. God bless you and have a safe ride home.